Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us tonight. It is Monday, September 18th, 2023, and this is our regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. As usual, could you please take a second and silence your phones? And after doing that, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Before we get into our roll call this evening, I would like us to take a moment of silence to reflect upon, pray for, and honor the life of Marshall St. Sauber. After that, Penny's gonna give us, share a few words with us. Penny?
Thank you, President McFarland. Yes, last week, our school community experienced a loss with the passing of Marshall St. Sauber. Marshall was a ninth grader at Dow High School and was a member of the ninth grade football team. Before becoming a Charger, Marshall was a student at Jefferson Middle School, Central Park Elementary, and started with us at Carpenter Elementary. On behalf of Midland Public Schools, know that our deepest and most sincere sympathy is with Marshall's family, friends, and anyone who is grieving this loss, including our school staff at Dow High, Jefferson, and our elementary schools. Last week, I called Jennifer, Marshall's mom, and expressed my condolences and condolences on behalf of the district. And we talked for a moment about the words and the messages in Marshall's obituary. And as we talked, it seemed clear that there was a particular part we're sharing, and she gave permission for me to share this. So I'm quoting, "Above all, Marshall was Marshall. We are proud of who he was. The best way to honor his memory is to go out and try new things. Break the rules when necessary. Take on each new day with bravery. Laugh hard, laugh often. Be kind to each other."
Okay. Thank you, Penny. All right, moving into our agenda. Mr. Hatfield, roll call, please.
Yep. President McFarland?
Here.
Vice President Roush?
Here.
Secretary Hatfield is here. Treasurer Lotterbach?
Here.
Member Blasey?
Here.
Member Ringgold?
Here.
Member Horowitz?
Present.
All right. Okay, we've got everybody tonight. Moving on to our consent agenda, that's item two. We have 2.1, approval of the minutes from August 21, 2023, regular meeting. Item 2.2 is a list of staff who have announced their resignation as well as the effective dates. Item 2.3 is approval of the school system's bills for the month of June 2023 in the amount of $11,235,356. Item 2.4 is a request to authorize legal payments. The list of the invoices can be found in the agenda. And with that, I will accept a motion for the consent agenda.
I move adoption of the consent agenda, items 2.1 through 2.4. I support.
Motion by Mr. Lotterbach, support by Mr. Hatfield. Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have item three, presentations to the board. 3.1, shining stars. Penny?
Well, this is gonna be fun. Come on up. I'm so excited to present our shining star, one of our shining stars, to Angela Pranny. She joined the MPS team in 2015 as a paraprofessional at East Lawn Elementary. Feel free to fact-check me at any point. She transferred to the Transportation Department as a substitute bus driver in 2017, and then became a permanent bus driver in 2018, the position that she still holds currently. Angela was also previously employed through our food service company, Chartwell's, as a contracted staff member. She was nominated for a shining star by a colleague, and among their comments were the following. "You did an outstanding job. This is so great. You did an outstanding job of assisting a student who experienced a medical emergency while students were boarding her bus. The situation called for immediate action, and she did what was necessary to care for the student while maintaining her poise. She was an outstanding example of grace under pressure when a student experienced this medical emergency. She responded to the student while also helping guide the other students back to school. After the ambulance arrived, I witnessed her checking in with the other students, giving hugs and high fives as needed. The situation was handled beautifully." Thank you so much. Congratulations. And the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you for all you did.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I like how we take it all the way around now.
And that's our gift to you, that you can leave now. Have a good night. I don't think our other shining star is with us tonight, but I think it still warrants reading the nomination. Kyle Wood. Kyle joined the MPS team in 2020 when he was hired as a third grade teacher at Plymouth. He moved from teaching third grade to kindergarten, which is the position he currently holds. He earned his Bachelor of Science degree in elementary education from Ferris State Kendall College of Art and Design. He was nominated by a parent, and among their comments are the following. "My son used to struggle with his ADHD diagnosis. I was apprehensive about the start of kindergarten and his ability to manage his emotions. My fears were completely unfounded as Mr. Wood made my son feel successful, confident, and excited about school. My son cannot stop talking about what's going on in class. He has made friends, he is reading, and feels empowered to tackle tough emotions and challenges. We can credit Mr. Wood for making my son feel welcomed, loved, safe, and successful in school. We are so thankful for Mr. Wood." Congratulations to Kyle Wood.
Okay, Penny, we'll move right into 3.2, presentation of 2023 Employee Awards.
Trying to figure out the mic situation. Sorry, I'll just use this one. I don't think these folks are with us tonight. If you are, please come on up. But we just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge here at the board meeting the award winners for the Distinguished Service Award. These were presented at our opening session in front of our entire staff, and it was a lovely celebration. And you can see the beautiful faces of our team members who were honored with the Distinguished Service Award. Tracy Chamberlain is part of our Technology Department, an IT project manager, systems analyst, and there were lovely things said about her collaborative spirit and the way that she serves behind the scenes in the Tech Department. Lynn Burns is an Administrative Assistant at HH Dow High School, and lots of positive comments about Lynn in the presentation, how she is a smiling face to those who come to Dow High and really holds the team together. I think there might have even been a comment that she really knows how to keep Dow High moving forward, and maybe some who think she actually runs that office pretty well. So we were very happy to honor Lynn. Olga Mulveney is a paraprofessional at Midland High School, and it was really a wonderful opportunity to celebrate the work that our paraprofessionals do, and Olga is a shining example of a paraprofessional who really cares deeply for students and really rises to the occasion, and we're very happy to celebrate Olga. Our last Distinguished Service Award recipient was JR Bornhaman, who is the manager at Central Auditorium, another member of our team who works behind the scenes, isn't often really seen a lot out in the individual schools because he is making sure that Central Auditorium is ready to go for all of our productions. And so that was an extra special opportunity because we had to surprise him, given that he was the one kind of running the show during that awards ceremony. So really happy to honor JR. We also, at our opening session, had an opportunity to honor teachers with the Gerstacker Excellence in Teaching Award. And a similar format, it's a bit of a surprise, and there were videos that were created to honor each of these winners. And here are these beautiful smiling faces. Cassandra Kramer was honored from Chestnut Hill Elementary, Stacy Capua from Adams Elementary, Andrew Zimmer from Jefferson Middle School, and Connie Beeson Steger from High School, from Midland High School. And we could go on and on and say lots of amazing things about all four of these folks. I think I shared the opening ceremony video with you, so you're welcome to go back and see that for yourselves. But we are just really proud of these four, and they really exemplify the best of our teaching staff. Thank you to the Gerstacker Foundation for continuing to support this opportunity to recognize excellence in our district, both with the Gerstacker Awards and with the Distinguished Service Awards. Well, a representative from Gerstacker couldn't be with us for the ceremony. We did send a lovely thank you, follow-up note, along with information about all of our award winners for this year. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Penny. Moving on, we're at item 3.3. We have with us tonight Jessica Rolfe from Yo &amp; Yo with our 2022-23 Audit Report.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here tonight to go through the results of the financial audit for the year ended June 30th, 2023. We met with MFO Committee a few weeks ago, went through everything in a little more detail. You guys have a lot of stuff in front of you, but what I'm gonna go through tonight is just the PowerPoint, kind of summarizes everything and all those reports that were given to you. The first slide here is your audit results. So this is what we're hired to do, is to give an opinion on your financial statements. We had an unmodified opinion again this year. That's the highest level of assurance you can receive, the best opinion you can get. It means that the financials are prepared in accordance with the standards that they're supposed to be, and that we feel they're free of any material misstatements. I will bring attention to, and you'll see it a little bit as we talk here, is there was a new standard we adopted this year. Gatsby's been very busy with these standards. If you remember back to last year, we implemented leases. This year, we implemented SPITAS as the short term, stands for Subscription-Based Information Technology Arrangements. So much like leases, any sort of software agreement, we're now showing as an asset and a liability on the books. So pretty much washes to about zero, but another new asset and liability similar to leases. First here, we have the general fund, so we're gonna focus on your main operational fund tonight. First slide here is the balance sheet, so all the assets and liabilities of the school district as of June 30th, 2023. If you look at total assets there, you'll see we're at about $44.7 million this year, an increase of about $2.3 million from the prior year. As we talk throughout, we'll also talk about state aid. And state aid was quite a bit higher this year, and that's what's resulting in the higher assets as well, because we had higher receivable at the end of the year for state aid. Liabilities, you'll see we're at about $10.6 million this year, pretty consistent with the numbers from last year, no big changes there. Fund balance up about $2.1 million, and we'll see that as we get to the next slide as well, but that's what we added to our fund balance this year for general fund. Next, we have our statement of revenues and expenses, so the income statement of the general fund. You'll see revenues, we're at about $109 million. That's a $16.5 million increase from last year. Two main things, state aid, up about $14.4 million. A lot of that is MIPSers money that's coming in and going right back out to pay for those retirement liabilities. Federal money also up about $1.1 million, mostly due to more ESSER funding spent this year compared to last. And typically, when revenue goes up, so does expenditures. We get all these federal monies and state aids, but we have to use them for certain purposes, so you can see the expenditures increased by a pretty similar amount to the revenues. Overall, the change in fund balance, so the net income, is a little over $2 million to the general fund this year. Next up, we compare your actual results to that final budget for general fund. You can see actual results were quite a bit better. I've seen this at about all my districts. There was a little unknown with some of the state aid money. I know you guys had some employer costs budgeted for that came in a little lower than expected. And then those SPITAS, everybody kind of overbudgeted. We didn't know how much we were gonna have to show in revenues and expenses. There were a lot of calculations that went into that, so everybody was a little conservative on that side to make sure we didn't have any Next, we have your general fund revenue, just broken out in little slices as to where it comes from. You can see the bulk of the funding coming from the state, at about 69%. That was about 2% higher than it was last year. All the other buckets there, your federal, local, et cetera, were pretty consistent with the year before. Same thing for expenditures. We always look at where every, all those expenditures are going. The biggest expense for any district is obviously those salaries and benefits at about 82% this year, which was a little bit of a decrease from last year by 4%. Everything else, again, fairly consistent, maybe 1% or 2% changes from the year before. Comparatively, we look over the last five years, and you'll see when we look at all these things, is that revenues and expenses have really gone up. The school districts have been receiving a lot of funding for ESSER, for state aid, for all different types of things. But the key thing to remember with some of that is it is one-time funding, right? All these numbers have been inflating every year, but ESSER's gonna go away soon, and a lot of these funds that have been pouring in are gonna kind of go back down. Same thing here, just another way to look at those revenues and expenses per pupil. So you can see that as you're taking in revenue, it's consistent with the expenses that are being spent on a per pupil basis. I went and looked at your pupil numbers as I was doing this, and pretty consistent year to year, a small decline, which is what most districts are seeing. I think this year, we were down about 46 from the year before. And this is always kind of the fun slide everybody likes to look at, is what your unassigned spendable fund balance is as a percentage of expenditures. So you can see this year, we're at about 30%. MDE typically recommends at least 15% to 20%, so you guys are definitely healthy in that regard. I would say most of my districts are on the higher end right now. A lot of funding's been coming in, so it's, times have been good for school districts in comparison to some of the times of the past. I will say it's a little bit down from years prior, and a lot of that is just kind of how the formula works. So I said there's been a lot of one-time funding or a lot of pass-through funding. So as they've been increasing money for MIPSers, and you're getting it in, and then you're spending it right back out, that's inflating that expenditure number, which in turn is making that percentage a little lower. So even though your cash and everything's probably better than it has been in the past, that number seems a little lower just because of those ins and outs. We also look there as at the equivalent of how far you could operate based on what you have in fund balance right now, based on a calendar year and a school year. So you can see those numbers, again, a little bit lower than the year before because of that expenditure fluctuation. Now I'm gonna go through each bond. You have a couple bonds still out there. The Series 2 bond, you can see, is about done. We will be doing a bond audit shortly on that. Typically, when it reaches 95% complete, we're required to do an audit of those funds. So that will be conducted probably in the next few months here. Next, you still have the Energy Conservation Bond, also getting pretty well spent. I had there at about 93% as of the end of the year, so that one's coming close to a close as well. And then we have the newest one, which is our Series 3 Bond, which was issued in March 2023. Only a little under 2% spent as of year end, so that will be the one ramping up for the next year. That's really all I had in terms of the numbers. So now, here's the results. You can see for our financial statements that we just went through, we had no findings this year again, so that was all clean. The other thing we do is we audit your federal dollars. So we look specifically at all the federal money you're receiving, and we have to audit specific programs depending on a calculation. The programs we audited this year was the Education Stabilization Fund, which is ESSER, and then your Nutrition Cluster. Those made up about 83% of your total federal expenditures. We made a good dent on testing a lot of the federal money you received. Same thing, no findings, unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, so no concerns came up during that federal fund audit. And other than that, that's really all I have to report. Another clean year, everything went well, looked, went smoothly. And that's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
Are there any questions? Brad?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate your time and effort.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott, might I make a comment?
Of course.
So this, this is really wonderful to have a clean audit like this, and I just want to recognize, first off, Brian for leading our business office team, and not to diminish Brian's leadership, but the people who really do the work. And Lori Holderby is with us tonight, John McClelland and her entire team. It's hard to describe the amount of work that goes into a typical year's audit, and each year, the added layers of the new requirements, and certainly, these grant funds have created a little extra work, would you say, Lori?
Things I've been trusting.
Yes. So thank you to you and your team. Please pass that along, that we really appreciate their diligence. I think it speaks to the fact that we have a lot of processes in place that really work, and that we have people who we know are highly skilled and we can trust to do great work. So thank you, and thank you, Brian. And looking forward to next year. And thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is item 3.4. This is, I think, going to be a standing item for the next year or so until we get this completed. This is our superintendent search process update, and Phil's gonna fill us in on that.
Yeah, so after the board approved the...
Oh, I'm sorry. Phil, let me stop you. 3.3 was an action item. I overlooked that. I apologize.
Oh, good catch.
Yes.
So with that, I will accept a motion to...
I'll make a motion to accept the 2022-23 Audit Report as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Roush, second by Mrs. Horowitz. Any additional discussion on the audit report?
We can say that, to let all of you know that, obviously, we've talked about it over and over and over again, that ESSER funds are diminishing and going away, and yes, that is number one on our radar of what does not get renewed, and what service can we still provide that that money did allow us to provide. So all those things are on the radar.
Thanks, Brad. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Phil, I'm sorry for the interruption.
No, you're good.
Please continue.
All right, so item 3.4 is a superintendent search update. After we discussed the RFP last month and approved it, we sent the RFP directly to the following firms, including MASB, Michigan Leadership Institute, Ray &amp; Associates, Hazard Young, ETA &amp; Associates, and then School Exec Connect. The RFP was additionally posted on the MPS website and Sigma, which is the state of Michigan's RFP site, and that has a deadline to submit proposals by October 6th at 5:00 PM. I do note that the presentation we shared a few months ago, we talked about narrowing the RFP responses down to three firms and then interviewing those firms at the October meeting, which is currently scheduled for October 16th. I think just as a board, we should discuss how we select those three firms to bring back in for interviews. So I'd like to make a motion for consideration that the board empowers the three of us on the subcommittee, which are Scott, myself, and Brad, to make the selection of the three, and then present those three to the board for consideration. Obviously, we'd also submit in the agenda packet all of the RFP responses.
Okay, I will support that. So will you share the criteria, the selection criteria? How will the selection criteria be developed?
For narrowing down the three? I think that would be the work of the subcommittee.
Yeah.
And then because we're making the down-selection decision, I think we should post the subcommittee meeting publicly, if that makes sense.
Is there, is there anything in bylaws or anything like that that says how we need to procedurally do this to give the authority to the committee?
Not that I know. I think we're doing it by way of motion.
Yeah, I think by way of motion, we would do it, and as long as we do the subcommittee as open door. The other, I mean, the other option would be we would have to schedule a special meeting before October 16th, but after October 6th.
We're still not making any decisions for any. We're just bringing forth recommendations if we get...
Of three to interview.
If we get five, we're gonna bring three forward.
Right.
Yeah, and that's even assuming we get the responses back. So just kind of putting maybe the cart before the horse, but at least we'll be prepared if we do.
I guess after the subcommittee's top three are posted, if there are concerns about why numbers four and five weren't selected, will we have the option to open that up for discussion?
Absolutely.
Yeah. How, yeah, how would we?
But they wouldn't be able to be at the meeting for an interview on the 16th?
To get them back in the mix, or to understand why the subcommittee made the decision that it did?
I think first would be why the subcommittee made the decision they did, and then after a robust discussion, if there's some concerns, possibly to get them back in the mix.
I think you would know the why when you're presented with the three. You know, we would outline, here's why we selected these three, based on the information we gathered, et cetera. The criteria should dictate the, should give us the why. Yeah. If that's laid out. Yeah. To your second point, I don't know that. There's an answer to that, but I know I guess, I don't know.
Cross the bridge when we get there, I think. I mean, the other, the other option is we just meet all seven of us in this room publicly before, after the 6th and before the 16th.
I'm, I'm comfortable with the three of you vetting and making a recommendation to us. If for some reason, one of us sees something that's really gone haywire, I guess we can cross that bridge when we come to it, but you, the three of you have gotten us this far. I trust your process. As long as we're complying with the Open Meetings Act to reduce it down to three, by all means, I'm, I'm comfortable with that process.
Okay.
And I would so move if you need a motion to approve the process.
I'll support it. So the original motion was...
Oh, but Phil already moved. Okay, I'll support Phil's motion. Yeah, exactly.
Okay. All right, so just so we're, let me clarify that. So we have a motion to allow the selection committee...
To develop criteria and select, if there are more than three responses, select three to bring forward to the board for interviews in this forum at the regularly scheduled October 16th meeting.
Okay.
And that the meeting of the subcommittee would be an open meeting.
Correct.
Supported by Mr. Lotterbach. Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries, Phil. All right, next up, we have requests to address the board, and I have two tonight, but I know we had some latecomers, so I will give you an opportunity if you so desire. First up, we have Mr. John Kelly. Welcome, Mr. Kelly. Thanks for joining us.
Hello. Just wanted to come address the board regarding something that could be a topic that's come up many times, but my first time here and with a second grader at Chestnut Hill. Myself went there, I think 98-ish, I'm not sure, but just the parking and the drop-off and pickup is something I just wanted to bring to your attention. I'm not, I feel like, you know, there's some big renovations went on recently with the gyms and stuff looks good. There's extra loops. But as a civil engineer, a lot of dealing, you know, with pedestrian vehicular traffic, I'm currently a project manager at MDOT, and it's almost like the OCD of traffic zip-zapping when I go through there, how, I don't wanna use negative words, but it could be more efficient. And so something I'll bring up, and it talked about me, I'll go to the, you know, the school itself, but I also see on Ask Midland, or I've been told. but I also see on Ass Midland, or I've been told there's a lot of chatter, all the other elementary schools, and kind of bring to the attention the reality of, you know, say, two working parents, you know, daycare costs twenty-six hundred a month, you know, I got, we got two other younger kids that'll be coming through the system too, so that's why that's cost so much, but proportion of that, you know, we gotta take them to the daycare to bus there and back. We can't really, you know, you drop off eight-thirty-ish, that drop off is usually, but you know, you loop around, it's not bad. The pickup is where it's just, I, I feel like we could maybe do something, some, I, I'm kind of offering more or less myself to help, and maybe I can, you know, put together some extra minds and see what we can come up with, um, the pickup sits, it could take, you know, half hour or more, a lot of people show up real early, and I suppose if you, or someone works from home, or somebody have extra time, well, we don't, and it's, you know, how do you, so I guess like our situation, we can't actually pick our kids up ourselves, so it's just that extra cost, and that's a reality, I think, for a lot of families where either you're waiting in line, or you're parking, you know, three blocks down the road, so you know, or it's, it's, it's kind of crazy, you know, so something I wanna bring up, I'm sure this has come up, but something more or less maybe offering to help, um...
Great.
It should be a little bit easier to get your kids to and from school, it's a lot of cost without, you know, I know the buses can't come, uh, I think when I grew up, I had, kids would walk, I was probably thinking kids walk, you know, but it's like no other kids walk, and I'm not comfortable with my, you know, seven-year-old who might have some attention issues walking, we're far enough away, or is, do not be comfortable with that by himself, or, uh, I think buses ran, but, you know, in, uh, inside a mile and a half, I, I'm not sure when that changed, but just something to bring up, and I'll, I'll continue asking, maybe brainstorm, maybe do something to help, but just wanted to, felt guilty if I didn't come and say something about it, so hopefully I'll be back at some point. Thank you, thank you.
We appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelly, the number that you provided, that's the best number to, to reach you?
Yes.
Should somebody want to reach out and touch base on this?
That's my cell phone.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your time tonight. Okay, next we have Mr. Joe Bonnades. Welcome, Mr. Bonnades, thank you for joining us.
Greetings. Thank you to our interim superintendent for meeting with my wife and I to help clear the air and provide background to some of the things that have been clear from this side of the table. Now, uh, now that the era of SHARO has ended, I would like to go back in history and try to put a few things in context. Back in ancient times, pre-CO, pre-COVID, the board would cheerfully receive public comment from a few people for five minutes, and the idea of board follow-up was always mentioned. When COVID and the mask mandates hit, the size of the audience went ballistic for a few months, a number of people who wished to speak also went up, and the board clipped the time people could speak from five minutes to three minutes, so the meeting would not take too long. This sounded like a temporary measure at the time, but once a liberty is lost, it is rarely regained. Later, the new Thune bylaw package set the three minutes as permanent policy, though it is not clear whose idea that was, the law firms or SHAROs. Ironically, mask issues were not the only thing being curbed at that time. This was when the three paragraph public intimidation language was added to the agenda for public speaking, and also to the time when there started to be public comment on the invasion of CRT into the school systems under the D E I flag. No other public meeting has this intimidation language, and ironically, it was okay for the superintendent to slander the public, but the most aggressive public comments have actually been from the D E I supporters. Examples available on request, I only have three minutes. My wife and I have spoken dozens of times between us, I have received one feedback from the board to clarify a technical point. Going back to your pre-COVID claims that the board would follow up as necessary, I will officially request feedback on why is the three paragraph intimidation section in the agenda template? It is not stated in the bylaws or the Open Meeting Act. The city of Midland has nothing like it, the county board of commissioners has nothing like it, my township has nothing like it. Are the people speaking at this board more dangerous than anyplace else? I really should not have to consult a lawyer before I come here, and if your legal firm feels this is important to have on every agenda, you might consider never uttering the term transparent again. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to address the board? Going once, twice? Okay, we'll close the floor and move on, thank you very much. Uh, next up, we have item five on our agenda tonight, Finance, Facilities and Operations. Uh, five point one, we have Committee Minutes, Mr. Lotterbach.
Thank you, Scott. Committee met on September fifth, two thousand twenty-three, we discussed the twenty-two, twenty-three audit. Ms. Rolfe reviewed the twenty-two, twenty-three audit with the committee. Topics included various sections of the audit report, including financial statements, the single audit, and the governance communication. The audit proclaimed an unmodified opinion or clean audit, and an addition of approximately two million dollars to the general fund balance. June financials, June financials were reviewed with the committee. July and August financials will be presented at the October Board of Education meeting. This is the MPS traditional practice due to year-end reporting and focus on the audit. Zero ayes, the administration will recommend entering a five-year contract with zero ayes for weapons monitoring services at MPS school buildings. If approved, twenty-three, twenty-four safety grant funds will be utilized. Food service van, administration will recommend ordering a two thousand twenty-four Ford Transit cargo van to be utilized by the food service department. Funds for the truck were built into the twenty-three, twenty-four food service fund spend-down plan. I B A P testing fees, committee discussed extending coverage of I B and A P testing fees through the two thousand twenty-three, twenty, it says twenty thirty-four, but it should say twenty twenty-four school year. Uh, the hold harmless tax rate, the committee discussed potential ballot language for the renewal that will be placed on the May two thousand twenty-four ballot. And finally, facilities study, demographic information related to the facility study was shared with the committee. Our next FFO meeting will be October second of two thousand twenty-three. I hope that before these are adopted by the board, we can correct that date, that typo. Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, we have an action item, uh, this is our food service van purchase, Mr. Bruton.
Thank you, appreciate that. Uh, we are recommending this evening that we order a two thousand twenty-four Ford Transit three fifty cargo van, this will also have a lift gate, and the order will be coming from Lunghammer Ford of Owasso, Michigan. The total price for this van and the lift gate is fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. The vehicle, of course, will be assigned to the food service department. We are recommending this purchase through the state My Deal bidding program, which follows our purchasing procedures and will be paid for out of food service funds.
Excellent, I will accept the motion regarding item five point two.
Move the adoption of item five point two for the purchase of the two thousand twenty-four Transit three fifty van.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Lotterbach, support by Mr. Roush, any additional discussion regarding five point two? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, okay, thank you very much. Motion carries. Next up, item five point three, Mr. Bruton.
Thank you, um, we are recommending this evening that the district extends our temporary coverage of all costs that are associated with students taking both I B and A P tests, um, as member Lotterbach pointed out, not twenty through twenty thirty-four, but through two thousand twenty-four. Um, if approved this evening, ESSER three funds will support the cost of implementation as they did last year.
Okay.
I move to support, um, coverage of I P, I B A P testing fees through spring of two thousand twenty-four.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Ringold, support by Mr. Lotterbach, any additional discussion for item five point three?
Just to highlight that this is ESSER three funds, this will be expiring soon, this is just, this is a one-off, uh, coverage, a gift from the board, that we are using funds that we have to cover this for the students, and past two thousand twenty-four, we will probably revert back to the old program, or we will at least entertain what the cost is in those fees and look at it again as a board.
Brian, what's the total amount of the fees that we're covering?
About a hundred and ten thousand dollars per year, sir.
Thank you.
Am, am I also remember, because we covered them last year?
Correct.
As well, was that out of ESSER, or was that out of, uh, fund, extra fund balance?
ESSER.
It was ESSER as well last year, okay.
Brian?
Go ahead.
Brian, not for today, but maybe an action item that could be helpful coming back as we start to think about long range would be, are there other fees that our students incur that can keep them from achieving their full potential, whether it's skilled trades or A B I P, any, kind of to cover the full gamut, just so we have awareness to it at a future board meeting might be help, really helpful.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Okay, good comments. Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, none, motion carries, thank you very much. Uh, next up, item four, this is the zero ayes, Mr. Bruton.
Thank you, for transparency, the proposal we are giving to you this evening is identical to a proposal that we gave you last year. None of the numbers have changed, nor any of the details, um, but we did want to bring it back to you because it does have updated dates on the contract. We were going to solicit federal school safety funds for this last year, um, we still do not have word on that grant, but our patience is wearing a touch thin, and we have available to us state school safety grant funds, so since we are going to change the verbiage of how we're gonna fund it, we wanted to bring it back for full transparency. So we are recommending that we enter a five-year service agreement with zero ayes incorporated. Um, they are out of Concho Hocken, I hope I'm saying that right, Pennsylvania, that's a mouthful, to provide a weapon detection services through MPS surveillance cameras. We will be using the state of Michigan's school safety grant funds for this agreement if it is approved by the board this evening. The five-year total is two hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay, thank you very much, I will accept the motion.
I move for approval of item five point four, uh, entering five-year deal with zero ayes weapon detection.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Hatfield, support by Mr. Roush, any additional discussion, questions?
Just, um, confirming this is using our existing cameras, and this is just a program that then watches everything that we're already doing for weapons detection.
Superintendent Jaster is our most knowledgeable on the subject.
So it's A I software that is intended to function through our cameras, and our, our tech staff has already worked with some of their folks behind the scenes just to prepare, um, given there was approval tonight, we wanted to move forward quickly if this, this occurred. And, and yes, it functions through our cameras, the agreement is up to a hundred and ninety-three cameras throughout the district, so we are gonna prioritize, um, you know, the bulk of those cameras will be elementary schools, we already have the Evolve systems at the secondary building, so this would, uh, complement and give some additional support at secondaries too, so we would focus those strategically based on which, um, recommendations came from the company themselves as to what cameras would be best for the software.
How many cameras do we have right now?
Hundred, uh, Dave, I'll hand three seventy-four, four hundred? Four, four something, four something.
So this would cover...
So this would cover about half of them, but the main thing is that you're covering exterior entrances and, and main corridors with the software. The more obscure areas, it's not necessary according to what we, we were told, working with the company initially, so, thank you.
Good question, Jen. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you very much. Next up, we have information with gifts, Mr. Bruton.
Thank you, uh, for information only, we are presenting seven gifts, the total one thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars. As you'll see in the agenda, all gifts have been donated to support the Dow High Robotics team. As is tradition, we'll honor the donors in the broadcast credits and through board correspondence, and we thank these donors for the support of the Dow High Robotics team.
Thank you very much. Um, next up, we are item six, human resources, there was not a study committee, uh, meeting, so there are no minutes to read, so we'll move right into six point one, information, Mr. Jaster.
Thank you. The board and staff extend their deepest sympathy to the family of Ms. Shirley Demmers. Uh, Ms. Demmers passed away August twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, she was employed as a parent professional at two buildings, Adams and Parkdale, and in addition, she did do some, uh, library and clerical work in those buildings. She worked for MPS intermittently from nineteen fifty-eight to nineteen ninety-five, and she officially retired in nineteen ninety-five with fifteen years of service.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next up, item seven is correspondence to and from the Board of Education, seven point one is information only, that's letters to the Board of Education from the individuals and entities listed. Uh, item seven point two is for information as well, uh, letters from the Board of Education, in this case, it's to Chestnut Hill P T O. Item eight, scheduled activities, uh, there you'll see a list of our remaining scheduled meetings for the year, as well as, uh, our tentative dates for January, or for two thousand twenty-four, of course, pending approval. Next up, study discussion session, are there any, uh, points of clarification before we turn the floor over to Penny for a final comment?
Nope.
Okay, Penny, the floor is yours.
I don't have much to say, other than we are into the school year, and things, uh, are feeling like we're hitting a good rhythm in our schools. I'm happy to share that now that things are settled a bit, agenda group is out Monday mornings, as we committed to having our meetings in schools, and I think it's good for us to be out and getting a pulse of what's happening, and getting lots of good feedback from principals and staff that we are certainly more visible. Similarly, last week, we started our classroom visit schedule at three schools, and we have three more this week, and that's a great opportunity for us to, uh, spend time with students and, uh, teachers, and just keeping a pulse on what's happening. I think we have some evidence already that just through those conversations, all of those, that we're able to identify some concerns early on and take care of them quickly, so that's feeling, uh, really good and aligns quite well with, uh, what I indicated was our commitment to building a stronger sense of connection and communication in an overall school community. That's all I have, thanks for being here tonight, it's good to see all of you as well.
And on your visits, if it hasn't, happens to be Chestnut Hill, uh, Mr. Kelly would probably let the kid to check out the, the flow of traffic.
Yes, I think we'll be on that, we'll take a look.
We had a, at Chestnut Hill, wait, there was a parent that did parking, like, move people through, I don't know if they're still there or not, but it was a big deal, so.
At Woodcrest, we had a name for that role, now I... That was the most stressful part of everybody's day, is just getting through the drop-off line.
Yep, yeah.
Well, this is an area I'm gonna need to learn more about, I know Brian and Jeff have...
We need to, we need to look at Chestnut Hill, for sure, but...
Yes. I know we have certainly some constraints based on what, what the physical space looks like, and, uh, we'll take another look at it. All right, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, there is, uh, nothing left to do but accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we stand adjourned.